I'd like to call the October 23rd, 2023 Peachtree City Planning Commission meeting to order. If you would all stand and please say "Pledge allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Any announcements and/or reports?
Not this evening.
Okay. I'd like to continue on to item four, approval of minutes. Commissioners, you had an opportunity to review the minutes from the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. Any changes? Robin, anything from staff's side?
We haven't heard any comments, no, sir.
Anything from the commissioners?
No.
Nothing? Okay. That being said, I'd like to have a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting, October 9th, 2023, minutes as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, item five. We do have two public hearings this evening. I'm going to go ahead and go over the procedures. When the public hearing is opened, the members of the planning commission will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the chairperson declares the hearing complete. The chairperson will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor. Individual members of the public will be given up to five minutes to state their case. And please, I would ask, we're going to try to stay with the five minutes. I will allow you to go ahead and finish your sentence. I would say thought, unfortunately, we've had it in the past where a thought has included a number of pages. So we're going to keep that at five minutes and please finish your sentence and then we'll move on to the next individual. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. Next, those supporting the issue will be heard, and that does include the applicant. Then, those opposing the issue will be heard. Prior to closing the public hearing, input portion of the meeting, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the chairperson is assured that the input is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the planning commission may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. Come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making your remarks. Keep remarks under five minutes, and please try not to repeat others' comments, and address all comments to the chairperson. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to staff.
Good evening. This may look familiar. This is property outlined in blue. And let's me see, there we go. And this pink line is the current city boundaries, and there is the Booth Middle School, Stagecoach Road running down here, is Robinson to Spear. And so, just a little bit of a timeline for this request. The step one was approved in May, and when they came before the council, they actually had a plan that had one subdivision access from Spear and the other from Stagecoach. And the city council at the time, a couple of members commented that they were not fans of the connection to Spear Road. And so, when the applicant came forward for the step two plan, they showed both subdivisions accessing Stagecoach Road only. The public hearing was held by this body on August 14th, and many of the comments, commenters that came up were concerned with traffic on Stagecoach Road and thereby Carriage Road. This body recommended 5-0 for denial. And in between the public hearing with the planning commission and the public hearing with the city council, the applicant, in response to those public comments, changed or reverted back to the plan that they had shown in the step one, so that each subdivision, they're not connected, but one access is off of Stagecoach Road, and then the easternmost one access is off of Spear. When the city council heard this and held their public hearing in September, they believed that the public needed another opportunity to comment, or you, you all needed another opportunity to reconsider the revised plan. And so, they remanded it back to this body, and we are starting the public hearing process over again, but this time now with what I'm calling the step one plan, so that there the two shall meet, so that the two subdivisions, now what you have is a request to rezone the western side of this Camp Creek Tributary to ER for two lots, and they'd be accessible from Stagecoach Road. There would be a path connection between them, but no road connection. And the pink area would be accessed as a proposed 21-lot subdivision accessible from Because we are in an annexation process, I think it's important for us to revisit some of the highlights of how we review these requests for annexation. First is the zoning around the area. Property is currently zoned ER in the county, which has a five-acre minimum. There is some R72 right adjacent to it, which is a two-acre minimum. In the city, there is property that is zoned ER, which has a three-acre minimum, and then Hyde Park Phase One, or Hyde Park is zoned LUR. The smallest lot is one and a half acres. The future land use map on the left side is what the city has adopted. On the right side of the city is what the county has adopted. They have showing this for rural residential with a three-acre lot minimum. An environmental area, this is sort of a designation that the county uses to put property owners on notice that development will have to comply with potentially environmentally impacted property. Around the property is single-family low, which has a one-acre minimum, single-family medium, which has a quarter-acre minimum, and a CS or community services for the school and the church. We have to review the impacts that the proposal would have on public services. First is that water would be provided by the county. Sewer would be via private septic on each lot, and the police and fire have said that there is no significant impact to their current service level of the proposed development. Roads would have to be built by the developer and would have to be built to Peachtree City standards, as would the path that they're showing here, would have to be built by the developer to Peachtree City standards. Then we have to look at how the proposal does or does not meet certain goals and policies set out in the comprehensive plan. The first we always look at is natural resources. How are we protecting or preserving our natural resources? In this case, the city has a goal to dedicate out or to separate out environmentally sensitive areas. These are wetland streams, stream buffers, and the like. And you can see them, they're drawn here in sort of the hatched area. This is an estimate of their exact location. They are not plotted separately, and so in order to meet city policy in the comprehensive plan, this would need to be plotted separately and dedicated to either the HOA or the city. And if this is done, I just want to bring to attention that it can have an impact on some of the proposed lot sizes. The next we look at is land use. You all are familiar with our village concept, which consists of a village center and then the village itself. This is not within a village center, and therefore that low-density residential use is an appropriate use. And in order to meet the city policy, the lots would have to be at least one acre in size to meet that single-family low, their SFL designation. We also have a goal of providing housing for people of all ages and abilities, and this could be achieved if the homes included some ground-level bedrooms and full bathrooms and low-maintenance siding to help reduce the lifetime cost of maintenance. And then finally, we look at the budget impacts. We do a, what we call a land use fiscal impact in the city, and every year when we do the budget, we update it to provide an average of what an average single-family home costs, what it costs the city to provide services to that home. So I always highlight the average, not every home does this, but on average, it costs the city and the taxpayers about $1,379 under our current budget. And in order to recoup that in property taxes alone, there are other ways that that can be recouped, but from property taxes alone, the fair market value of that property or that dwelling unit must be $570,407. The applicant has said that these homes will be consistent, comparable to their Hyde Park Phase One, when looked at the fair market value of those, and on average, they're about a million dollars. So this table summarizes three scenarios, the first one being what's the current scenario, agricultural undeveloped, who's getting the various tax dollars? You can see there the school, the county EMS, 911, et cetera. The next one, scenario A, is if it's not annexed, but it is developed as the future land use designation in the county, which we assume is about 14 three-acre lots valued at a million dollars. And then the last one is if it is annexed and developed as proposed, which would be about 23 lots at a million dollars. And you can just review this for your information. So some of the, all of these conditions are listed in your memo except for one. I did miss one, and I've italicized it here. So I'll go through them so that the applicant is aware of this change. That the environmentally sensitive land be separated, plotted separately, and deeded to either an HOA or the city. That the LUR district have a maximum of 21 lots and should be developed substantially comparable to the plan that we've reviewed tonight. The minimum lot size needs to be an acre in the LUR zoning district, and that all LUR lots need to comply with the zoning standards in R43 zoning districts. So that's a front setback of 50 feet, rear setback of 30 feet, side setbacks of 15 feet, one-acre minimum, lot width and whatever regulated through that condition. That they preserve a 50-foot landscape buffer on Spear Road, and that a landscaping plan be reviewed and approved. And then, this is one that I mentioned at the public hearing for the city council previous to this one, but forgot to put it in your report, and I apologize, but that they also preserve a 50-foot landscape buffer along the west side of that subdivision road where the property abouts 209 Spear Road. Right here, they're showing it right up against the property line, and as you can see, I think that's a JG. This lot right here is 209 Spear Road. It's owned by the Fuller family, and they're a flag lot, and I believe their home is located very close to the property line, and so any kind of road that came up there would basically be their view. And so, if we move that over 50 feet and provide some vegetation there, that'll limit the impact to this property owner. That homes be faced with brick, stone, or cementitious siding. That 75% of the homes should have at least one ground-level bedroom and full bathroom, and that an HOA be responsible for maintenance of community facilities, sidewalks, et cetera. That's a standard condition in LUR zoning districts. So I do believe the applicant is here tonight to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Robin. Applicant, abbotance representative, both, if you'd please approach the microphone, state your name, who you represent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Rick Lindsey, here to represent Hyde Park Properties II LLC, that's the applicant, and I have both Mike and Michael Hyde here with me this evening to answer any technical questions. I'm assuming the planning commission members recall the presentation made a couple of months ago, but for members of the public, I will recap highlights of this proposed annexation and development. As Robin stated, what we have brought back to the city the first time for the planning commission, but back to the city, is really what was presented in the step one application made to the city council back in May. And as Robin stated, that is only having access off of Spear Road for the 21 lots that are in the LUR section. That's the pink section there on the plan, with the access for the ER section being only off of Stagecoach. There are about 52 acres of land here involved, and after all the development of the 23 lots, it's about an average of two and a quarter acres per lot. The property in, or excuse me, the section that's in the gold or kind of brown tent is being proposed as ER, state residential, and that is the area that lies between Booth Middle School and the creek. The remaining area that's in the pink that lies east of the creek would be zone limited use residential, and as I stated, would only have access from Spear Road. The homes would become all 23, a part of the Hyde Park Homeowners Association. There will be a multi-use path, as Robin stated there, toward the northern part of the property that will adhere to the city standards for its development, as will all the roads, both in the LUR and the ER section come up to city standards. These homes will be high-end. As Robin stated, the proposal is they're about a million dollars each. The city currently does not have any new homes that are being built that are on large lots and of that price range, so this is a new, or I should say different, housing option that is not available currently in the city. The 12 acres that Robin discussed, my clients are willing to donate that or dedicate that to the city. It's not drawn on here, but it will be surveyed and plotted appropriately. Unfortunately, the gentleman who prepared these plats for us, Mike Orber, passed away about five or six weeks ago, so that's why we don't have new drawings for you guys. Mike, people know Mike, he was around here forever and a day. But anyway, even after the transfer of the 12 acres to the city, there won't be any lot that'll be less than one acre in size, so it will comply with the future land use plan of the city. When we were here before the planning commission and the public hearing before the city council, by far the comments that were in opposition to the proposed annexation dealt with the traffic that might be generated and have to exit and enter the development from Stagecoach and from Carriage. Going back to what, again, we had called the step one annexation application, where the road for the access to the 21 lots comes all off of Spear addresses that concern. We've also removed those easements that we had in the northern part of the city, or excuse me, the property there, and on the eastern side that I believe was some concern. But again, those would have no impact now with access only coming off of Spear anyway. The annexation provides the city with the opportunity to help direct and control the development. As Robin has stated, if it's in the city, it's going to develop to city standards. If it stays in the county, the property is now going to be developed. It's been owned by my clients for 25 or more years, and it is time to be developed. A little bit of history, what happened on this back in the past. If you look at the tail end, I'll call the southern end, of the pink property, that last little part that kind of goes down like a little leg or something, that was acquired by my clients just a couple of years ago. Prior to that, the access to this property was off of, would be off of Stagecoach Road. The applicant had approached both the county and the city about developing the property, was told by both the county and the city that really Stagecoach needed to be developed and improved prior to the development of this property. Well, that obviously has occurred, and now, since the acquisition of the property toward the southern end, it's been acquired by my property. We have access off of Spear. There is a deed restriction from the Davis family, that's the people who sold the property to my clients, do not want the connection from Spear Road over to Stagecoach, and that's to prevent the school traffic from cutting through there. So going back to the step one annexation application we had submitted back in May, the access now is shown off of Spear, and that's why now it can be developed in the county or in the city. If it is in the county, when my client acquired the property, it was land use planned for one unit per two acres. For some reason, a couple of years ago, the future land use plan for the county was changed to one unit for three acres. If we go to the county, we will request that the county honor what the commitment was back when the property was acquired, and it'd be one unit to two acres. But in any event, if it's two-acre lots, it's going to be right about the same number of units that we have presented to the city, approximately 23 in total, so it might be a couple more, it might be a couple less. But even if it's developed into one unit of three acres, it's going to result in about 17 houses, so you're really looking about the same. So the question really, as we see it for the planning commission and for the city council, is does the city want this development controlled by the city ordinances and the standards established by Peachtree City, or do we want to have this out in the county? Again, with the city, the advantage is, is that the 12 acres of the environmentally sensitive property would be dedicated to the city, which is what I believe the city council is requesting, or to the homeowners association. But I believe the city wants, the city council wants those 12 acres owned by the city so that they can be used for whatever projects that the city might want to use this conservation property for. Again, it'll be developed to the city standards, the taxes would benefit the city as opposed to the county, and we believe that it is a positive event for the city, for this annexation to occur, and we request that the planning commission vote to recommend approval of the annexation to the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions of the planning commission once the time is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Okay. With that being completed, I'd like to go ahead and open the discussion up to the public for those supporting the issue. Do we have anyone supporting the issue? Please come to the microphone, state your name and neighborhood, please.
I'm the same moment of longboat. If you look at a land use map of Peachtree City currently, there's not too many land even available, or going to be available, that's already within the city without annexing, that you can build a house with one or more acres of land now. So I think this is a great opportunity that the Hyde family has presented, so we can have that option in Peachtree City to be able to build something like that. It's great because it's another option. I like the multi-generational fact that, you know, we can grow our family here and then we can pass it down to generations, like my parents have as well, and having somebody, being able to stay on the main floor with elders, that's a good idea as well. And now that the plan has changed from what it was presented before with the traffic concerns being gone, because it's coming off of Spear Road, I don't see why we wouldn't not approve this, and I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in favor of the proposal? Yes, Mr. Lindsey?
I didn't neglect to say that the recommended conditions that Robin had made, my clients are fine with that, with the exception of one. Robin, if you could pull those recommendation conditions or recommended conditions up for me, please. All are fine except for the preserve 50-foot landscape buffer along the west side of the LUR subdivision. We would request that be reduced to 20 feet. The house that's next to us, the Fuller property, the garage, which is the closest part to our property, is about 90 feet, 94 feet away from the property line. If we push the street all the way over 50 feet from the line, it's really going to cut the lot that's on the other side that is on my client's property and going to squish it in, so we'd like to see it spread out a little bit so that it's not shoved up on the street. And the 20-foot landscape buffer along that side would give at least 110 feet, 115 feet from the right-of-way, but the right-of-way, as the planning commission knows, the road, the paved part of the road doesn't go to the end of the right-of-way. You've got about 12 to 15 feet on either side, so you're looking at probably about 120, 130 feet between that road, and nothing will be on that side of the road all the way to the house. So that's the only request that we would make for a change on the recommended conditions. The rest of them are fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to those who are opposed. If you'd please step up and give your name in your neighborhood, I would appreciate it.
Hello. Well, my name's Bill Four, and I'm from 209 Spear Road. I disappointed a little bit that I, until today, I hadn't heard the suggested change in plan. I would have thought as a resident that was affected that much, that I would have had some notice, but I came over to City Hall this afternoon and managed to get a copy of the new proposed layout. It's, the plot doesn't really, oh, sorry, the drawing, if we could pull it up again. My property is, I appreciate it. I think that shows the acreage, but in fact, the house is here, so to show the true effect. My driveway runs completely from back here from the entrance to Spear Road. I bought a plot of land, bought a plot of land 35 years ago, with the idea of having peace and quiet, solitude, back in the woods, and I've enjoyed that. I understand developments take place, and I think the main request from myself, particularly what I've heard in the last few minutes as well, is that more consideration be given to the actual entrance and exit, and the position of that entrance and exit. My neighbor is Davis, who sold the land to gain access to the development, and I would like it to be considered, if the proposal is going to go ahead, that that entrance is positioned on the other side of the plots, so that it would, in fact, show the entrance. If you took that line, the green line, is my driveway. This is the new proposed entrance. And really, the distance from my land at Summerwood is not that great. In the winter, there's cars coming up and down along the construction site, all of the nests and debris and trees coming in from this point and out this point. So it really, the distance is really too narrow. A 50-foot buffer would certainly improve the situation, but I prefer it to be considered that the person that sold the land, to Mr. Hyde, he should take the road from his property rather than mine, and that the access from this side to Spear Road rather than mine next to me. Could you hear that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So I guess it's self-interest to some degree, but that, having a driveway to possibly 23 properties coming out onto Spear Road at that point is also a little dangerous. There's a slight hill and a bend at that point, and I think it would be somewhat dangerous. There's a slight hill and a bend at that point, and I think it would be somewhat dangerous. My property driveway already has another driveway, it's a joint driveway next to it, so you'd have two houses that are affected by this exit point, creating, I believe, a dangerous situation. Also, the topography of the land where my driveway is is not really that kind for a road development, and that I'm sure would need more of an engineering review to see what.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to have the next individual, if you would.
I'm Larry Manwaring. And before I begin, I'd like to thank you seriously for what you do. You know, you're our protection. You're our source to know what's happening on a local level, and we do appreciate what you do. It's not easy, and we understand that. I thank you for your unanimous vote the last time, and we hope we can have a unanimous vote again. My concern with this proposed annex is twofold, two critical issues. Number one, lot size. We hear a lot about two acres. It's not. It's one acre, and I'll show you that in a minute. The other one is the undetermined development that'll take place in the Kensington West. That's the little chunk of land that is to the left over there by the, by the football field. There's a small chunk there that is, really, it's proposed development, but it isn't laid out, and that concerns me. First of all, really, these lots are one-acre lots. They're closer to one acre than they are two. It is not another Hyde Park. The Hyde Park lots are twice the size of what these lots will be. And you say, well, how can that be? You've been hearing about it being two-acre lots. Well, in the Kensington, let's see, that'd be Kensington East, there's a total of thirty-nine acres. Well, a good bit of that, thirty-nine acres, is in a floodplain. A good bit of it is in a creek. A good bit of it is in the land that's going to be reserved for the city. A good bit of it is in the infrastructure, the road and the cart path. And now even the, there's a line that goes down through there where they're going to put in trees. Now, you would end up subtracting, well, in fact, they mentioned here a minute ago, twelve acres would be donated to the city, and then you've got the other, a third of the property is going to be really not in the development itself. And the lot, all of the lots that the people receive will be closer to one-acre lots than they are two-acre lots. And that is inconsistent with the rest of the property. One of the maps that you saw up there was all the property that was ER. ER, three-acre plus. It is inconsistent with the property that is on our side of Robinson Road, and I hope you'll take that into consideration. Another one is this undetermined Kensington West. That's that chunk of land by the football field. It just happens to be big enough for a possible elementary school, or a proposed development later of even higher impact. It concerns me. Now, what in the fact they had, the term they had was proposed, I think, road on the map, if you look in the fine print of it. So there are two real concerns there that I see at this, and it's, now, it was twenty-one lots the last time it's around, now it's twenty-three lots on this. Potential easement is what that was called, potential. I see it as a potential problem later on. Last time around, y'all voted unanimously against this, basically the same proposal, same lot size, same break-up and designations and so on. I think you did that because you believe in a master plan, comprehensive plan. I think you believe in consistent zoning. I think you have a commitment to citizens like myself and the gentleman who just spoke. I urge you to once again vote unanimously, and thereby send a message that Peachtree City stands for quality zoning and sticks to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else against?
Hello, my name is Ron Raines, Carriage Lane. I think my biggest concern is the ten, six-acre and seven-acre parcel of land. And the reason is, I think it could be a school someday or higher density of some kind, but I was hoping that there was a possibility to put deed restrictions on the land, so even if it's flipped, it could still only be residential homes there instead of possibly a school someday. So if there was a possibility of, you know, we'll annex it in to the city, but only with deed restrictions, that that could only be houses. So if that could go on record, I would appreciate it. The other thing I'm concerned with, again, with Larry, is the lot sizes. Those are one-acre lots, but you're dealing with, you know, septic tanks. And if plumbing is near, if it could use sewage, instead of, you know, I'm thinking if you did two-acre lots with septic tanks would be a lot better than one-acre lots. If you're going to do one-acre lots, why don't you use a sewage system, if that's possible? Anyway, that's really all I wanted to say, is I'm concerned about that Lot One and Lot Two on the west Kensington. It's curious to me why they didn't actually draw the lines in there for whatever they're going to build. Why did you just leave it like big plot? That's a concern to me. To me, it looks like a school fix to happen right next to the football field. So that's, if you live in that area, the traffic is already bad, so you're going to double the traffic if you put a school there. And I think that's a possibility. So if there's a way to put deed restrictions on the land to protect it, even if it's sold to somebody else someday in the future, that that land could only be used for houses if we decide to annex it. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed?
My name is Lynn Frow, and I live in Forest Glen, that's over by Braylon. I take offense to people who try to skirt the good of the many for a few. Usually, big dollars are involved, and that's only for the few. I also take offense to having a planning commission with oversight that is ignored by the very ones who need guidance and a bigger picture or view. We all know the developer will come back with unused land to build more houses, squeeze it in there somehow. The land will get connected to Fayetteville, like, through now Spear Road, it sounds like, and kind of common sense be damned. Peachtree City is in control of our development, zoning, all sorts of issues relating to the good and the ugly, if you will, for Peachtree City. Ignoring the experts on the planning commission, I think, is a folly. Build, build, build. The issue of the school happens to be in there, in the way here, and who takes the blame when a child is injured or killed? Not the developer. A pitiful plan to allow our children put in unnecessary jeopardy and to satisfy the greed of million-dollar homes. We need twenty-three more million-dollar homes here in Peachtree City. But that, he touched on that, and that was like, I don't believe it. You're going to put a septic system on a million-dollar home? Boy, I'd squawk about that one. Anyway, we're all interested in the best for our city, and I think, I don't know if this is it. I'm certainly not the expert, but I do know, I talk to a lot of people, and I do know that there are some, just some odd things here. So I thank you for your time, and I was thrilled to death when you unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Ellis. I live in Crescent Oak. I just want to say, I'm totally against annexing, and especially, I like to know what the city gains besides the few dollars that they're going to be making on houses. And then the other thing is, I always find it comical when I see the comments that police and fire have no impact on these thirty houses here, twenty houses here, annexing here. What kind of sense does that make to you guys? Do you understand that? When the police chief and the fire chief says, no, it's no impact on us. That's all I want to say. No annexing for Peachtree City, period.
Thank you.
Jim Forstall, I live in Spooner Ridge, and I came tonight to see what the changes were from the last go-around on this issue, when y'all voted five, nothing to turn it down. And I could be wrong, but I thought there were more issues that you all brought up other than the traffic that it would put on Spears Road, or on Stagecoach Road. I believe there were other issues, and I don't know that any of those issues have been addressed in this current plan, which I do appreciate the fact that there will be less stress put into the communities around Booth, which is an abortion. How the, how the city ever allowed that to happen, I'll never understand. When I moved here in nineteen ninety-two, one of the big reasons we located here is because it was a planned city, and that was a big, big selling point for us. We were pretty much made aware, assured that things would be done right, things wouldn't get out of control. And although things change, this traffic problem that we have in Peachtree City was identified many years ago, and it still happened. It was identified as the biggest problem in the city when we did the update to the comprehensive plan, and it remains the biggest problem in the city, and I don't think we have a solution to fix it, although I hope we do. But I don't see how we can do any more annexations in the city until we see if that problem is resolved. I also don't see us doing any more annexations in this city until we have an annexation plan, so that we get back to being a planned city. The other thing I want to bring up, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, I don't understand how you can't require sewer pipe be put in there instead of this, these, this other sewage plant that they're talking about. And I'm very concerned that they put an elementary school in there, which would make the community, that community around Booth even worse than the abortion that already exists. Thank you, and I do appreciate what you all do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I may be wrong, oh, sorry, Suzanne Brown, and I live in Crescent Oak. I may be wrong, but it still looks like there's an easement there going to the east. I don't know that that's, that's been glossed over and said that it doesn't exist, but it looks like it's still there. Peachtree City does not need the annexation. Let's also cover the fact that there's no legal basis for anyone to claim that a property owner is entitled to maximize his investment. No such law or case law exists. A property owner does have a legal right to use his land the way it's zoned when he purchases it. He purchased land in greater Fayette County, which allows him to build fourteen houses on lots that are a minimum of three acres. Plus, he's dealing with Camp Creek, the watershed area, and the floodplain. He has the right to submit his building permit request right now to Fayette County. That's what he should do. How could the former owner of that last little lot down on Spear Road restrict the traffic going through? According to my recollection, that lot was purchased in twenty sixteen, long before Booth became a dream. Oh, he has the right to apply for this annexation into Peachtree City, but guess what? Peachtree City is not legally obligated to approve it. We have the right to deny annexation. In fact, as Jim Forstall mentioned, the current annexation plan is not so current, it's dated twenty fourteen. This land is not mentioned anywhere in it. The agenda packet clearly outlines the financial benefit the developer will enjoy by getting the land annexed. Building twenty-three homes on smaller lots will be far more profitable than just fourteen homes on three-acre lots. The packet indicates the city would eventually get about fifty-five thousand dollars a year in property taxes if he builds twenty-three houses. The sad reality is that residential property generates less in taxes than it costs in services. That increases the tax burden for all of the rest of the current residents and future property owners. Because we do not have enough industrial and commercial tax revenue to offset that extra burden, we will all have to pay. The more houses you build, the more they will need to raise taxes before, because we lack that industrial revenue. This annexation benefits the developer, not the city, and not the residents. So let's look at other concerns and why it's bad for Peachtree City. I'm truly concerned about the fact that there is no way for this annexation to prevent future development of the old Stagecoach Road. There's no, no mention of that this will stop that development. So what are your options? You can simply deny the application, and you don't even need to state a reason, although there are plenty of reasons to deny it. You can deny it because the tax revenue will not support the maintenance perpetuity, and we need industrial growth, not residential. So there's no need to annex any of it. The cost to current and future taxpayers would be too high. If you consider approving it, you should demand a minimum lot size of three acres. That's the same size the Fayette County would require, and because it's the lowest density that should be on the boundary of the city, you should do whatever you must to prevent build-out of old Stagecoach Road. You should do whatever you must to require the two western lots cannot be divided for residential development. One of the prior annexation requests had eight properties on that western orange property there. With the school at one end of this development, you have many issues to consider, but remember, you are not obligated to recommend approval of any annexation. It's not in the twenty fourteen annexation plan, and this annexation was denied in twenty ten and in twenty twenty. The current plan has no more merit to Peachtree City than any of the former applications. So you should deny this annexation. And once again, is it better A or better B? Better A for annexation or better B for blocking the annexation? I go with B.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in opposition?
My name is Jeff Durisak. I live over on 221 Spear Road, just a couple houses away from Bill. Been there a long time, just like Bill, thirty-two years now. And I'm obviously against this annexation, anything that increases traffic on Spear Road right now, which is, it's getting quite dangerous on that road. Just like Bill said, it really kind of confuses why they would butt that road up against his, his property instead of the other one, like he mentioned. I just wanted to throw that out. Yeah, I'm for keeping... Yeah, I'm for keeping it the way it was zoned, three acre lots. And like I said, anything that decreases the amount of traffic on that Spear Road would be great. And if you do, you know, agree to go ahead with this rezoning, I would take a look at that road. Have any of y'all been out there to look at that road? Mr. Fuller's Road? Yeah, there's going to be some serious engineering for that to make that workable. Anyhow, appreciate your time. Let me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Art Lally. I live on Spear Road. And I consider this a direct problem with me. I'm on the other end of Spear Road, so if I'm out of place here, just tell me I'm not allowed to talk. I've been out there thirty-seven years, very end of Spear Road, Spear and Ebenezer. If you come down Spear Road and you take that turn where the little joggle is, it's a downhill grade, it's on a turn, and it's almost directly across from Platinum Ridge. Those cars are coming out of there, too. Trucks, eighteen-wheelers, cement trucks, construction trucks are zooming down that road every day. It used to be a gravel road. They didn't grade it. When they finished it, they just paved it. They didn't slope it for that turn. The gentleman owns that land that they're butting right up against this. I'm surprised he hasn't had an accident come out of there yet. You will create a hazard, a major problem, when you've got teenage drivers on how many houses with two or three cars. That's not a safe condition. It's a downhill grade on a turn, and they're flying down Spear Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, opposition? Okay. Like to go ahead and declare the public comment period closed? Going to go ahead and open it up for questions from the commissioners. Start on my left, Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, thank you. I think the first question I have is for the developer, I think. My understanding so far is that if it's not annexed into Peachtree City, you still plan on developing it?
That's correct.
Okay. So the question would be, if developed in Fayette County, how will that wetland area be handled?
Under the county ordinances, they would, the wetland area would become part of the properties. So it would just be deeded to the folks who purchased the properties.
Okay. The second question I have for you is concerning the lot size. That pink area that is next to the yellow area, those properties, I think, are the properties that are the, in the environmental sensitive area. It looks like there's about ten lots or so, you know?
Right, those on the west side of the, of the subdivision road.
Yes, correct. Do you happen to know, um, what the acreage would be for those particular properties?
Well, the, the acreage that would be dedicated to the city actually comes off both the brown and the pink property. See, on the, uh, kind of the east side of the brown properties, that squiggly line there, do you see that? That's also in the environmentally sensitive areas. So all total, coming from the brown and the pink, is twelve acres. I can't tell you, sent up here today, how much would come off of the pink.
Okay. Is that somewhat of a concern for you in, in, in the fact that you will be trying to sell this property to someone?
Uh, no. We have to adhere to all the, uh, well, either the county or the city's ordinances dealing with buffer requirements next to creeks and, and wetland areas, and also the state law. They almost all are identical. And so we have to be so many feet off of that and whatnot. But again, with all the area, excuse me, that's going to be dedicated, dedicated to the city, then the remaining area that's buildable, each of those lots will be greater than one acre. So they'll all be fine as far as developing those homes.
Okay. So if you know they'll be greater than one acre, it sounds as if you have some estimate, estimate as to which one would be the smallest. Do you have any idea which one would be the smallest lot?
Uh, I do not.
Okay.
Michael, Michael, do you guys know what would be the smallest lot in size?
I think it was lot seventeen. It was like 1.1 acres or something.
Did you? Ms. Reeves, did you hear that response?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think the other questions I had were for staff, if you don't mind. I know we've talked about annexation a couple times now. My understanding so far is that there are three methods that you can annex property into Peachtree City. Is that correct?
The state law has, I think, six. But those that do not include some type of legislative, like the state legislative action or referendum, there are two methods. And it's the, either the hundred percent method, meaning a hundred percent of the property owners want to annex, or we call the sixty percent method, which is where sixty percent of the registered voters and property owners of sixty percent of the land request annexation. But this is, both of the ones that you're hearing tonight are the one hundred percent method.
Okay. Is there some reason why these type annexations aren't put to a vote? Some sort of referendum, or is there?
Your state legislators wrote the law.
Okay, and it can't be done?
And even the referendum option is only voters, the only voters who can vote in the referendum are people who live on the affected area. Not people outside.
Got it. Okay. I know we've talked about the annexation plan before. It is dated 2014. Was that plan ever adopted officially by the Peachtree City?
It was before me. So I would have to go through the minutes to find out exactly what the motion was at the time. It was something that was sort of given to me, sort of, here you go. And I haven't reviewed the actual minutes of it. It would certainly, um, there has been discussion of having, and I think I've sent this to an email to all of you. Counsel is talking a lot about this annexation study. And I don't want to speak for them. I never speak for them. My understanding is that they are interested in having a workshop that, where they will kind of, this is where I would take that, I would do that research as far as what had been done before, present them where we are today, and give them options about where to go in the future. And they would articulate to staff what their expectations would be going forward. They have talked about doing that. The last meeting on the previous Thursday, they had indicated to the city manager that they were interested in moving forward, and he's going to pull together a timeline. We're looking, I, please, I, he's the one who decides. But I believe we're looking at a workshop in that January timeframe. I think there was some discussion about should the outgoing members participate, or should it be the new members? And of course, I think at the Thursday meeting, both outgoing members said they weren't going anywhere. They'd be happy to provide any kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Institutional knowledge, because they were here in the 2014 period. And they didn't take any offense, it didn't appear to me that they took any offense about it being done in January after they were gone. And so my understanding is that's, you know, that's, that's where we're going time-wise, is to begin and get some clear direction from counsel. It would likely be done with a third-party consultant. And they would, you know, once we did the RFP and everything, we're really looking at a twelve-to-eighteen month period before anything would come back to city council for adoption. But before it came back to them, there would be multiple opportunities for public input.
Okay. This is probably more of a G-wiz question, but I'm, I'm just really kind of curious. I know the annexation plan is quite old. But in the last few years, do you have any idea of how many annexations have actually happened in Peachtree City?
Boy, I wish my memory were better. I did this, I did a summary for city council. I created a map and did a summary of the last, the annexations basically since 2001. There have been about fourteen to eighteen. I'm happy to email that. I don't, I didn't have it ready for tonight. But it is something that is readily available through open records, as well as I can email that to you all tonight. I can even post it on the city website, if you'd like. But it, what it is, it's a map of all the areas that have requested, when they requested, what was, what was granted or not granted, and what remains left to be developed as well. I'm happy to provide that. I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me tonight.
Okay, that would be great. And I think I heard something, and it sparked my interest. You probably, it may predate you. But 2010 and 2020, I think, is the dates I heard Ms. Brown mention as far as this particular property actually coming up in front of the planning commission before. I'm curious whether or not, you know, what it looked like then, and why it was not approved at that time. You may or may not know.
Well, the applicant, I think, could probably provide a much more detailed. Generally, Stagecoach was not paved. And their only access point was to Stagecoach Road, which we have learned from the school being constructed, that it ended up actually not being a public road at all. It was what they call a prescriptive easement. And so the school had to go through a process of actually purchasing that easement, paving it, whatnot. And I think that is why you are seeing, that was the main hurdle. I mean, that is a very, you know, the city put in, I think, $750,000 into the construction of that road. I mean, that's a multi, it's at least a one-and-a-half-million-dollar project. So that might have been a hurdle that this property owner was not able to overcome. But now the environment has changed around them. As far as what was asked for at the time, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, and I'm sorry. You know, I could have thought of that prior to now to ask you, but I'm sorry. The last thing, I think I also heard that the police chief and the fire chief have also indicated that this wouldn't be an impact on their operations. I don't, um, I don't recall actually them being here. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious, where did that come up from? Was that at the city council meetings?
So the city council meeting, they, they were here. But I send out, they all do reviews. And so I do have a record of the email, and emails that they have sent me that I can release to you. What, what they, what the police chief has said is, yes, this, and, and this is a sentiment that I think many will understand, this project has no direct impact. But when we, she would really like for us, or she has expressed a desire to look at this comprehensively through an annexation study, which makes sense for any service provider.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, so first, thank you to the public for coming out to give your input on this proposal. Thank you to the developer, representing the developer. So just two questions. So in this, I don't know if this is for staff or developer, whoever can answer. But the one gentleman, Bill, that lives at 209 Spear Road, I believe, mentioned that two houses would be affected by the exit point, like any changes made in order to do this development. In order to create, I guess, that would be a right-of-way, right? Will that take property from?
No, they're not, they can't take property from somebody else.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something going on there. And then for the developer. So in the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned, you know, this brings something to Peachtree City. We don't have, well, there are not a lot of lots, period, but like larger lots. So have you and the developer, like, considered just sticking to the, the three acre? You know, because that would be also something that, you know, is not available. A lot of people would love to live in the country, but don't want to leave Peachtree City. That would give people really nice lots, you know, without people on top of them. I, I just wondered if you'd actually considered that before this plan?
Right, under the city ordinances, the environmentally sensitive areas have to be dedicated either to the city or given to an HOA, which takes out a huge chunk, and so that's not developable. It's in the county that is included in the size of the lot. So even in the county, if it develops, we're going to have about seventeen houses there. If it's left in the city, in the post-plan, obviously, it's twenty-three. And we did increase lots. I know the one gentleman talked about, no, it's twenty-one lots on the east side of the creek, and two on the other side. And just to answer a couple of questions, there's a school, there's no plan. My clients have no plans to send, to sell this to the school board. And what, but what happened in Booth, I heard somebody else talk about this. It wasn't the city that wanted that, that school there, it was the school board. And every government has the right to condemn or acquire property. But that being said, there are no, no thoughts that there would be an elementary school there. My clients certainly aren't talking about doing that. So I wanted to make sure that was understood.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, he's right. The, um, the schools and churches are by law permitted in every single zoning because the state, your school board is actually a creature of the state. And the state supersedes any local zoning. And so it can go in any zoning district, no matter what.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Leota?
Uh, yes, thank you. I have a few questions for the developer. And I also want to thank all the public for coming out. I think your comments are very valuable to us to chew on and make an informed decision about how folks in the neighborhood feel. And I appreciate you coming out. I have a series of questions about the plan itself. And I wanted to clarify a couple of numbers that you put out. And this is a follow-up to Commissioner Reeves' questions. If the project is developed under the county requirements, in the way I understand it, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, there's two components here. There's the land use plan, and then there's the zoning. In the county, I understand the land use plan had a minimum of three acres, but the zoning is actually five. And in Peachtree City, the land use plan is single-family low, which is one acre minimum, but the zoning is actually three acre minimum. So is that correct?
Well, it's, it's not in the city, and...
No, what I'm saying is, in Peachtree City, the ER zoning is three acre.
Yes, you are correct.
And it, that area is, in the land use plan, is single-family low.
If it were annexed in, that would be the designation, is SFL, yes.
But the ER areas in Peachtree City in the land use plan are single-family low?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, that's what I was trying to get there.
But I also believe, if I'm correct, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, that the one-acre lots in Peachtree City are also considered single-family low.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's correct. Yeah, I, I agree with you. I guess my, my question is, I wanted to confirm the numbers that you gave us regarding the development per county standards. Would that be on the five-acre lot minimum in the zoning?
No, it would be, the three acre would allow seventeen lots, okay? That's what the land use plan is. County would have a very difficult time denying a request to rezone to three acres when that's their land use plan. It almost could not be defended in court. But when my clients bought this property, it was land use plan for one unit to two acres, not one unit to three.
Okay. And under the ER Peachtree City rules, the three-acre zoning, how many lots were you estimating?
That I don't know, because you got to take out the environmentally sensitive areas, because that cannot be counted into the individual lots. Is that correct, Robin?
It's, it's not exactly correct. It is allowed to be in the zoning district. The city has a policy, though, of pulling those out and having them separately plotted so that they're not included in the lot. so that they're not included in the lot. But that is a policy that is separate from the zoning. So, that's a comp, comp plan policy versus a zoning requirement.
Right, but I'm coming in asking for something the city doesn't want, uh, in that regard, because of the comp plan.
I mean, if I were to look at a request for rezoning to ER, we look at the comp plan, which has a policy of pulling those out, which would have a negative or a, a, um, it would reduce the number of land that could be then subdivided into three acres.
Thank you. Um, a, a follow-up on that same topic. Um, did I, did, is it correct that you said that you don't have a number on what the lot sizes would be in the pink area after the environmental areas are subtracted out?
My client has that. I don't, it's not on this plan right here, again, because, um, Mr. Lorber unfortunately passed away. So, I don't have it here before you. Um, but they have had the property surveyed. They know where the, um, lines would be. And the minimum, the smallest lot, uh, as Michael said, was a little more, just a fraction more than, than an acre. But most of them are, um, far greater in that size, uh, in the, in the pink area that we have on the map.
Including the environmental areas that would be deeded out?
Excluding, excluding the envi, the environmental areas.
A question that, uh, came up in the public comment. There's a fifty-foot access easement in the lower right-hand corner that extends from the proposed subdivision road to the east. Um, what's that for?
Again, uh, that's part of the initial, uh, plan that was drawn, again, before Mike passed away. It's my understanding that's going to disappear on there. But, again, that, you know, we're showing the, the twenty-one lots, um, with the access coming off of, uh, off of Spear Road. This is the plan that was, um, presented back in May for the step one. So, please, you know, again, you, you see where the lots are, um, and, and where the lines are moved a little bit here or there. Probably will happen from this. Um, but that was a, an access point that was back in May.
Okay, that, thank you. I'm, I'm sure you can understand that we're reacting to what's been presented.
No, I'm saying totally.
I think the anxiety is that's a future roadway extension for further annexation.
Well, and, and to be fair to everyone, that, um, any kind of access easement, if it were shown on the plan, if we want, if the city wanted it, we would actually put it as a zoning condition. We are not presenting that as a zoning condition because we understand that is not desired.
Okay. Um, the, the concept plan that is presented, and, and I understand its concept, and you haven't done a lot of engineering, uh, but typically, they might or would show some kind of stormwater management facility areas, which on a property of this size might be pretty substantial. Uh, any thoughts on that?
Is there detention retention pond on this?
Yeah, if it was gonna be able to be handled, Mike had all that, uh, accounted for.
Yeah, I, again, it, uh, state law, it has to be done. I just don't know where the lowest point on the topography is on this. Uh, but it will, it has to be addressed.
And that area would then be subtracted out from potential lot areas?
Doesn't have to be. It can be included as long as it's not in a wetland area. Okay.
Which, if it, you know, if it were developed in the city, we would require stormwater retention. In a subdivision this large, we would require it to be separated out. And the city has a policy of then actually owning and maintaining those. Um, smaller, large lot subdivisions throughout the city, you may actually see, when they were zoned, they were zoned with a condition that they have onsite stormwater management, which would then go through a different process. That would be like four lots or three lots or something smaller. Something this size is going to have to, our city engineer is gonna make sure that they comply with our ordinance.
Just a couple of questions about the property itself. Um, I did drive by it. I did look at all the aerial photos that were presented to us. It's pretty heavily wooded in looking at the information. And it's adjacent to what's been called, and I guess this is the name of it, the Shaker Ridge subdivision, which is the subdivision to your pink area south along Spear Road. Um, and that's been, to my mind, developed, uh, in a way that's preserved a lot of trees. Uh, how confident is, is the development team that trees can be saved and this property can be developed with minimal disturbance to canopy?
Well, the good news is the twelve acres, obviously, all those trees will be preserved. Um, and when you have lots of this size, uh, most homeowners want lots of trees, you know, maybe not right next to the house, but around the backyard, side yard, maybe some of the front. I live not too far from here, and I have a ton of trees in, in my front yard and even more than that in the back. So, I'm, I'm assuming that, um, that these homeowners who come in are gonna want to save most of the trees. And the city has a, uh, tree save ordinance and a landscaping ordinance that'll have to be adhered to.
Thank you. Uh, and only a couple of more questions, uh, about the narrative that you submitted with the application. In the first paragraph, it, it talked about, uh, furtherance of a larger, long-range plan and the anticipation of several future land purchases within the delineated contiguous land lots sixty-one and sixty-eight. Who's plan? Is that the developer's plan?
Michael, on the narrative.
We developed a thirty-two acres adjacent to the original one land lot at the time. And then we ended up acquiring three more properties, uh, to try and solve this problem and develop Spear Road. So, that's really the, the main idea behind it.
Okay. And then there's a, um, under the comprehensive plan goal statements, if you could just explain what this means. Uh, there's a statement that says, "Develop the west side after the east side is completely developed and occupied."
That, that's the phasing, um, that would go in. Again, they got to extend, um, Stagecoach. Yeah, come on up.
So, I think, part of the thing you have to understand is, Stagecoach is still not, to this day, paved to the edge of the city property. It, it turns into a gravel road. And the reason that there are two lots, despite the twenty-five other accusations people have about it, is because that is what we are currently entitled to with no improvement of the road whatsoever in the county today. I could get two building permits on those two lots as they're currently drawn and planted now. We, when we started this process, we did not know if we, if it would ever be paved to the edge of the city property, whether we would be allowed or, or encouraged to pave that and connect it. So, that is why that has been done separately. Um, regardless of the size of it, it's obviously a smaller development. We made the recent acquisition off of Spear Road. And so, we're just trying to get that one developed and, and move forward while the market has been, been positive. There's no reason we couldn't do them both at the same time, uh, if we're able to get that paving. In the first iteration we went through with the city, they wanted, they basically were telling us they didn't want it off of Spear Road. They wanted everything off of Stagecoach and that they were going to mandate us pave the remainder of Stagecoach to connect it and, and go from there. And obviously, that would change the dynamics a little bit. But it's, it has been a little bit of a dynamic situation, not of our making. We are not involved with paving Stagecoach with what's happened in, in connecting the school originally, connecting it over to Robinson Road, or connecting that last little bit to the edge of the city property. We're not involved with the school coming, coming in there. Um, so this is just, we've, we've tried to be listening to what people have concerns about. And, you know, it's like whack-a-mole, you take care of three or four problems and then you have three or more, four more, so.
Uh, thank you. I have one, one last question. I appreciate that, um, uh, explanation. Uh, the two brown lots that are proposed, are they, is it proposed to remain two lots with the extension of a potential road to provide public access to two lots? Or is that the potential for future lots later?
The, the answer I can give you is, we have fifty-two acres land use plan that we, that we would be entitled to from when we purchased the property, would effectively be twenty-six lots. We have been trying to, did not have the ability to access those first two, uh, or, or the, I'm pointing left, but you're looking the other way. Uh, we call them the, the brown lots. We didn't have access or the theoretical right to even subdivide it. Policies that both the, the city and the county have about driveways and not having a fifty-foot or sixty-foot, uh, access easement, you know, limits what, what you can do. But if you've got a dirt road, you got a hundred acres on it, you can do twenty, you know, five acre lots on it, and it can't stop you from doing that. So, it's kind of basically what, what those acres are for. It happens to be twelve acres, so it's divided roughly half and half. Uh, I don't know exactly, I don't even remember what, what those are. So, from a county zoning standpoint, we would be loosely entitled to, to twenty-six lots, maybe twenty-five lots because obviously you'd have like stormwater and, and the right of way that goes in there. So, twenty-three meets tha, that without question. Uh, I believe even if they're left at ER, that they would still have to be outside of the floodplain. I think only nine acres that is outside of the floodplain. So, even though it could theoretically be cut into four lots, I think it'd only be into three outside of the floodplain. Uh, I don't think we have a problem committing to that per se, uh, uh, for the future, if we can get the annexation we want. I am not prepared to commit to twelve different conditions that not, haven't even been mentioned here tonight and then, you know, have to shrink, shrink the other side, you know, to three acre lots and then commit to the two acres there. So, we're, we're prepared for this to be twenty-three acres, or, I'm sorry, twenty-three lots, you know, till, till the end of time. Um, we've got several lots that are, you know, two, two acres and change. Uh, most, most people don't want to live on more than an acre lot. It's a lot to take care of. But there are some people that don't mind two acres and, and three acres and five acres. And so, there's a market for that. There is not a market for ten of five acre lots. And there's not a market for seventeen three acre lots. And no developer that comes to this city or any other city is really gonna be trying to push that forward. So, it makes a lot more sense to be giving twelve acres to the city, which they can use as a, a benefit. And we can put some nature trails through there and everything. We don't mind buffering the edges of the property, not necessarily with an arbitrary fifty-foot buffer, but with actual landscaping and things that, that block visibility and, and theoretical noise. We've, we've taken that into consideration, but every time we've taken something into consideration, we just, we can fust that about something else.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Mr. Chairman, that's all my questions for now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, thanks. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for asking excellent questions. Um, for the applicant, um, can you elaborate on the access restrictions that were placed upon the property by the seller?
Paraphrasing the, the deed restriction, it says you cannot connect the property both to Spear and to Stagecoach. It can go one way or the other. Doesn't, the, the seller didn't care which way it went, just couldn't do both.
Got it. And can you elaborate also on why these, um, lot sizes were chosen in the annexation request in light of the surrounding neighborhoods and also the size lots of the Hyde Park development?
The, um, lots that are proposed here in, in, uh, in this annexation proposal really mirror what's in the property just to the south. Uh, they're all about the same size. So, that's, it kind of sets the standard and follow along those ways. There's only, if I'm correct, only one lot that's, um, over two acres. Um, and that's, I think, Mr. Fuller's property. He acquired...
There, there are three over two acres.
Three over two.
Sorry, on our property or the...
No, 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 on the shake rag or whatever it's called.
Fifty-one Spear is greater than two.
Um, but most of them are around, uh, two acres, which, again, looking at the average size, again, you're pulling out the, um, the wetland area, putting that back in. These, really, the, the development looks about the same for the properties that are to the south.
Okay, thank you. And then one final question just for staff. Um, can you, um, you may have done this in the last meeting, I can't recall, but can you, uh, let us know why the, there is no sewage lines running to this property?
The nearest public sewer, um, let's see, might go back to the aerial map. It's actually not on this map. So, the school did build a private sewer system. Um, and it, there's a pump somewhere down here that then up, goes up through the Stagecoach right of way. And the nearest public access point is on Robinson Road. That private sewer system, we are not, why say we, WASA is not aware if it has been built to public standards. And so, it cannot be tied into for public use. So, this, if it were to be soured, the nearest access point is all the way up here.
Could, could there be a survey done on the, on the...
Abs, yeah, I mean, we could, um, get the plans for the private sewer that the school built. It could be evaluated and determine what needs to be done to bring it up to public standards. And then somebody would have to pay for that, um...
Connection.
And bringing it up to standard. Um, I don't mean to insinuate that it's not, I just, they just don't know.
Got it. Okay, no further questions.
Commissioner Younger?
No questions.
Questions?
A lot of the, I guess, questions that, that I had in my mind from, really, the first public hearing as, as well as going through this have, have quite frankly been, been asked by fellow commissioners. And, and thank you again for doing such a, a great job. Um, I, I think my, my question, I guess, would be what would have been, again, asked is, you know, what has really stopped you from, from doing what you could have done under the Fayette County guidelines? And, and you've answered that. And, and that was my big, big question the whole time. Um, the land was developable. Um, it, it could have been developed, but it was not under, under the current Fayette County guidelines. So, thank you all for, for asking basically my, my question that I had in the back of my mind. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up now to commissioners' comments. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and start with Commissioner Hamner.
Right. Um, so, last time, uh, we talked about this, I talked about how the city meets the Peachtree City annexation plan from October twenty-fourteen and still doesn't. So, that's where I stand on this for right now.
Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, I, I also want to echo, um, my fellow commissioners who thanked the public for coming out. I think it is helpful to get comments in the public records. So, thank you once again. Um, I, I just don't understand the choice of the one acre lot size for this development. So, as it stands with these lot sizes, I, I, I am not in support of, of this annexation request. If it were to come back with larger lot sizes, I could be, uh, swayed into the other direction. But as it stands currently, I do not support the size of lots in this area of the city.
I'm afraid I may have, I hope I didn't cause any confusion to this.
Are they already one point five?
So, their, their lot sizes are larger than an acre. Um, even when you take out the environmental, the smallest is one point one acres. And that is, um, this little guy right here, okay? So, the rest of these lots are larger than an acre. I, I just provided that one acre minimum in order to comply with the comp plan. You all have the ability to recommend larger minimum lot sizes, absolutely. If you think that one and a half acre is the minimum lot size, that it would be appropriate, you all have the ability to recommend that, please. I just said the one acre because of the comp plan. That's all I have to hang our hat on. But you all have additional powers that I don't.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, thank you, Robin, for that clarification. I think, in response to that, we, we have been told several times now that there's at least one, um, parcel that would be one point one acres after the property for the city was, was taken out. So, you know, I, I still think that each parcel should be one point five, even two acres, uh, to, to really mesh with what's, what the neighborhood is surrounding this, this area, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Liotta?
Well, I'm a, a big advocate for the current, um, land use plan that we have in place here in Peachtree City. I think it's a good plan, and I advocate following a good plan. And what you see in this area on the eastern border of Peachtree City is predominantly ER zoning. And if the annexation occurs, it pushes the eastern Peachtree City border... And if the annexation occurs, it pushes the eastern Peachtree City border further east. And the only way I see that being reasonable in terms of being complicit with the current plan is that it meet ER standards. And I think if this property were annexed in and developed, it should meet the predominant ER conditions that are in the zone right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
So simply put, I think kind of what was mentioned earlier, Peachtree City is a city with a plan and I just think we should stick to it. So that's really all I have to say.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, thank you. There's not much more to say. I think I echo a lot of the comments that have already been said. I really, really think we need a new annexation plan. And I think this particular applicant just shows us why we need an annexation plan. We need tools in order to make decisions. And for that reason, I'm still not in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Reeves. And I echo my fellow commissioners. You know, one of the things that I did, and it does result in some other issues, was the elimination of the neighborhood primary access on Stagecoach. You know, initially I was pleased to see that, but then we hear of some other issues, of course, and I do travel Spear Road and I know that area through there. It is not a good location, unfortunately, and trying to move the access somewhere else really doesn't make much sense. I'm concerned about the lot size, as the fellow commissioners mentioned. One of the questions I had that I didn't bring up because it was discussed multiple times, of course, was the possible development of the two large lots of the 12-plus acres. You know, would those be eventually possibly subdivided and rezoned if that would be the situation or it would have to go through city then county to have those subdivided into smaller lots? So really what we're looking at is, in my opinion, is basically the same plan with a change to the roadway. But we're still looking at the same plan that was brought in front of the planning commission and that was denied by the planning commission. So I think we're back to where we were with just some minor changes. That's from what I see. I do believe we do need a annexation update plan. I think that needs to be, Robin, if you could please bring that back to City Council and to the city manager, that I think this council has shown as well as the public that that is a very important item that we need to take a look at. And anything that they can do to accelerate that or expedite that would definitely be appreciated, I think, by everyone here. Definitely appreciate that, going to council and to the mayor and to the city manager. We do, we do have a plan. We have a comprehensive plan and we do need to follow that, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent. It is the plan that we have. And any changes or updates to that plan need to go through the proper venues and the proper actions to do so. So, and I think that's an important part of the process that needs to be followed also. So that's all I have to say. With that, I'm going to entertain a motion from commissioners either to accept, prove, or deny the plan as presented.
I move to deny the plan as currently presented.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny PH 23-08. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of denial of PH 23-08, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Okay. Plan is denied.
Thank you.
Let me get to the next one.
The next item is also a public hearing, but since you've already read the procedure...
Correct. Thank you.
I will be happy to dive in.
Yes.
Upon your, tell me when you're ready.
Please do.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is also an annexation and rezoning request. It is for 11.3 acres at the end of Deanwood Terrace. That is the nearest public road to this property. The property is outlined in blue here. We are in the general area. There's Stagecoach, if you remember, that's the general area that we were just talking about, it's just to the north. This property is currently in the Shiloh Mobile Home Park, but it is subdivided, or it is not subdivided, I'm sorry, it is bisected by a tributary of the Camp Creek. And therefore, the only access point to this property is through what is known as Towson Place, a development under construction right now and in the city. Here's a close-up of that blue triangle area. They are requesting to rezone from MHP, is Mobile Home Park in the county, to limited use residential to allow up to 21 single-family lots. And I say "up to" because they started counting actually up here. There's a lot already that's counted in here. So they'll be basically taking what is now cul-de-sac and just kind of extending it down a little bit further and adding up to 21 single-family lots. So here's the zoning. It is zoned Mobile Home Park in the county, which would allow an estimated number of 41 mobile home lots. Surrounding zoning is R70 and AR. R70 is a two-acre minimum and AR is a five-acre minimum. In the city, we're, this is LUC 33. And the reason it's an LUC is because it incorporates quite a bit, it's a mixed-use development for this whole area up here off of Governor's Square and Peachtree Court. And the part that's under development right now is the single-family portion of that overall planned unit development. And that's Towson Place is what it's called, and it's for up to 94 single-family lots that are averaging 6,000 to 7,000 square feet each. And so they're requesting to rezone to LUR, but with the same conditions that apply to the single-family portion of the LUC. The future land use map. Again, it is designated for mobile homes in the county's comprehensive plan. They also have a part of that environmentally sensitive area because of that tributary. Nearby is what we call a single-family cluster, and that's from three to six dwelling units per acre. And so that single-family, the request is, conforms with that designation of SFC. Nearby, if you're traveling the roads, also there's some multifamily in there, some mixed-use So then we look at the impacts of public services. They would be serviced by the county water. They would be, they would access public sewer at Wassa. There's actually an existing line that runs through this tributary now. The police have indicated that there's no significant impact to their ability to provide services. And the fire and EMS, this property is actually under the only area in the city that has an automatic aid agreement, which means that all 911 calls from this area will automatically go to Peachtree City as opposed to other areas of the county where they would call the county 911 and then if they're not available, then they would call the city to ask. So we actually get the first call from this property today. Public roads, they would be public roads and they would have to be built by the developer and to Peachtree City standards. And we have actually, we contacted this, the Mobile Home Park property as well as this developer, because we are trying, the city is trying to find an alternate location for a path. Right now, the master path plan calls for a path along 54, the cemetery. That's a very expensive path because the cemetery impacts, you're not just buying land, you're actually buying them out of escrow accounts for that cemeteries are required to set up. So it's very expensive. So we're looking for alternatives. We contacted them. They actually said that they were open to providing something to us, whatever it is that we requested. We just don't, the city is the one who just doesn't have an exact plan or location. So when we've talked to them in person, they've said, "We're open to talking with you all and doing that, whatever you all want." So they're not showing a path location on their plan right now, but have indicated that they're open to a conversation and that the path on their property would be built by the developer and to Peachtree City standards. Then we look at the comp plan. The first one, as always, is the natural resources. This one is meeting our policy because they have subdivided all of those buffers around the stream, in fact, even more out as a separate parcel. And so individual lots do not contain some of those environmentally sensitive areas. Excuse me. The land use, we are within a 15-minute walk of a village center. So the single-family cluster density standards are appropriate in this area. And then housing, similar to the housing condition that we saw at our previous request, it could meet our housing policies if they provide first-floor bedroom and bath and low-maintenance siding. Finally, we look at budget impacts. We've already mentioned that the break-even cost, fair market value of a home in Peachtree City right now to recoup all the costs of providing service to it is $570,000 and change. The average fair market value in Towson Place today is $850,000. In fact, I went to their website and they've increased their prices since I've, since we did this staff report. So you can see here some of the scenarios. If it's undeveloped land currently, right now, they're paying about $704,000, $704 total taxes on the property. If it were developed into 41 mobile home lots, this is an estimated fair market value and the various taxes collected by the county, still none to the city, even though we provide direct access, we don't get anything and the county does. And if it's developed as proposed, this is the estimated value that we would get on an annual basis. So based on this, if you all recommend approval to the city council, we recommend these conditions, that it be developed substantially in compliance with the plan that they've provided tonight, that all the zoning setbacks would be the same as those for the single-family home portion in development now, Towson Place. And that includes, it's a little odd, but I'll read them out to you. Front setbacks for garages are 20 feet, but then the rest of the home, like if they have a porch or something, can actually increase and encroach into that street a little bit more, up to 10 feet. Same for rear setbacks. And then side setbacks are a minimum of five feet, so much so that at least there's a 10-foot separation between houses. That houses should be faced with that low-maintenance material such as brickstone, cementitious stucco or siding. Again, 75% of the houses have at least one ground level bedroom and bathroom. And there's your standard ordinance condition that the HOA be responsible for maintenance of community facilities, et cetera. The applicant does have their own presentation that they would like to give.
My voice is struggling today, so you have to forgive me if I clear my throat. I thought pollen's supposed to, but who knows? My name is Stephen Jones with the law firm of Taylor English Duma. Happy to be here here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you as always. This is Towson Place. Ms. Kai, you did a great job explaining it. Wanted to give you an overview of the LUC 33 that was approved for this entire mixed-use development. And you'll see the residential in the back, limited to 94 lots. You also see the insert of the additional 21 lots on this 11 acres here. That brings it to a total of 115 lots. This is just an expansion. For the purposes of this presentation and the purposes of the application, we're asking for LUR. But because we're mirroring everything in the LUC 33, I want to talk about it as if it's LUC 33.1, because it's just a continuation. And when this project was actually zoned, I'll show you on an excerpt of the concept previously. One of the conditions was for stubout onto this property here and to the property to the east in anticipation that, especially with this corner property, that it could only be developed in conjunction with the property here because that top corner of the Mobile Home Park is bisected by this creek. So it's a natural evolution. Here's the home renderings of what's being constructed out there. Homes are currently under construction. The price point is mid eights, up to a million-ish. Here's another house, a set of houses and renderings. Wanted to give you an overview of the zoning map. This doesn't include the counties, but it is zoned for the Mobile Home Park. And based on the density of the county's ordinance, Ms. Kai is exactly correct, approximately 40, 41 manufactured homes could be put on this part as it exists now. Here's just an aerial that you can see. You can see the existing stubout here. This lower portion of Towson has already been constructed and platted. And actually, the road has extended here, but just the tax assessor hasn't picked up on the final plat yet. This is the existing Mobile Home Park. This is what the property is zoned for within the county. And these are pictures, actual pictures of that development. Again, further pictures of that development. And so I wanted to give you a zoom in here because when this was zoned, and this is LUC 33, and as we all know, that's a specific carve-out in the ordinance, which is site-plan-specific. And one of those conditions was for the stubout street here, which we have constructed and are ready to tap into. So you'll see the connection here, carrying through that stubout that was intended and conditioned when LUC 33 was imposed on Towson Place. We've continued that south through the cul-de-sac here. Little zoomed in, so you can see, again, as Ms. Kai you pointed out, we have left out, we have not only met the minimum buffers, but exceeded those for the creek and also carved out the minimum buffers to the north as well, more than the minimum buffers. And so when I say this is LUC 33, staff recommended conditions, the development plan, the concept plan for this, it's really just a continuation of what was anticipated with LUC 33 with this LUR. That's why I want to think about it as LUC 33.1. Again, just some more home renderings. And this is a current house under construction, so you can kind of see those renderings coming to fruition. With that, if the commissioner has any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. Or if you have any questions later on in the public hearing, I'd be glad to answer those as well.
I think we'll address them during the later part. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Applicant is finished. We're going to go and take public comment for those who support. Anyone in support has presented? Okay. Those opposed, if you'd please step up, give your name and location again, would appreciate it.
I wasn't going to say anything. Linda Ellis, Crescent Oak. I wasn't going to mention anything, but I find it almost comical. Here again, fire chief and police, no impact. How can that be? Think about it. And then we have again, a couple of houses here, annexing here. No, we don't need that. And you presented it like it was already annexed. No, we're talking about annexation, correct?
Please track your comments to the council, to the commission, please.
I'm asking him because he presented it like he's already developing it. No, it's for annexation. No, it's for annexation, correct? If I understood this correctly. Thank you. No annexation.
Jim Forstall. I pretty much have the same comments on this that I had on the past, on the previous annexation. Came to Peachtree City because it was a planned city. I don't think this is part of the plan, and I don't think we should have any more annexations. This proliferation of annexations has got to come to a halt until we fix the traffic problem in this city and we have an annexation plan. I would also urge you, if you have not been over there, I drove over here last week to take a look at this. I can't believe how close these, how many houses are there. And what I saw is they come off two roads off of 54. You can get to 54 on two roads. And that section of 54 is extremely busy and complicated. I can't see how this is going to work without the annexation even happening, without really making that a dangerous area, getting onto 54. Not to mention, it's just going to add more congestion, traffic in the city. So I'm totally against this, and I hope you are too.
Suzanne Brown. I live in Crescent Oak. So how many houses will there be? 94 plus 21, 115. Isn't that over the 100-house magic number that requires a traffic study? And I don't hear anybody talking about a traffic study. And there's also a road now going to the east that we've been made aware of for another annexation of another usable, unusable unless it gets annexed into Towson Place for another little subdivision addition? How many houses will that end up being? 2014, the last annexation study. We need that updated. I echo what Linda Ellis said, Jim Forstall, and everybody who spoke in the annexation public hearing prior. We have two entrances and exits, but they all dump the traffic onto the same section of 54. And Lexington is not a village center. The closest village center is either Kedron or Aberdeen. Figure out the math. This entire annexation should have had a lot less dense housing than what it was originally approved for under the prior city council. And now you're going to add to it by adding this into it and going over that 100-house magic number? I think it needs a traffic study, and I think you need to deny this until we have an annexation plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else speak in opposition? Okay. I'm going to declare the public comment period closed. We're going to open it up to questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Hamner?
Yep. So question for city staff. Looking at the 2014 annexation plan, it does appear that this is part of that. Is that the opinion of city staff as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Commissioner Chris?
Is there 100-house minimum for?
Traffic study.
Traffic study?
No, sir. The 100-house rule of thumb is for two access points in case one gets shut down. It's also the requirement for, you know, the minimum requirement for recreational areas, which is being provided in the LUC portion of Toews and Place. Also, I think this is an excellent opportunity to reiterate what we brought up at the previous one about the stubs being shown on plans. That's, this is a really good example. That eastern stub was shown on the plan, but it was not a zoning condition, and it is not being provided by the development of Toews and Place because it was not a zoning condition. The other ones, this one, was a zoning condition.
No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyod?
I don't really have any questions for staff. I guess in looking at the application and looking, I guess in reiterating my comments on the prior application that I think we should be following our plan. When you look at it, this, in my mind, would be consistent with an annexation of property and proposing a use that's consistent with the adjacent use that it would be annexed to. So from that perspective, it appears to be consistent with the adjacent residential development where the stub road was provided. I do think that there would be a benefit for developing it from the access point where it's proposed. I think it would be better than coming from the Mobile Home Park site because I think you're going to be looking at at least two road crossings of the creek and probably some significant environmental disturbance to actually expand the Mobile Park home property to develop it under that zoning in this little triangular piece. So, I mean, in my mind, from a zoning standpoint, I think this makes more sense than the Mobile Home Park zoning if the, if this property's going to be developed. Those are my opinions.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Good. I don't have any questions either, so I'm going to go ahead back to Commissioner Reeves. Any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Johnson?
No, no comments, except, I mean, I think this is very similar to the previous, previous application, so my comments really are no different than the previous.
Okay. Commissioner Hamner?
All right. Yeah, I mean, I've been thinking a lot about this and, in ways, I'm conflicted about this. I ultimately will be voting yes on this because it does meet the 2014 annexation study. As Commissioner Lyod said earlier as well, it seems to be aligned with the adjoining property, also would be a better use, in my opinion, for the Mobile Home study, the Mobile Home allocations right now as well. But we need to be really careful with the annexations that do happen. The last time that we had an annexation before all these conversations was the property that was a bit further north, and it was, there was already pre-existing homes there. There was also commercial involved. It was really beneficial to the city. This doesn't really have as much in comparison to that one, but at the same time, it does follow the plan. It's aligned with what the other properties are right there as well. And I know as well that when this area originally came in front of the planning commission several years ago, you know, we had, as a planning commission, we voted zero to five against rezoning this area and ultimately bringing this in. You know, those, the city council ultimately decided to rezone this and then move forward with the ability to do this development. But those decisions that were made at that time obviously set the course for where we are now on this. So everything that has happened in terms of the planning that happened in 2014, the rezoning as well, ultimately say that this area is going to be appropriately used, in my opinion, for ultimately what's being proposed today.
Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I'll echo what Commissioner Hamner said. I really don't agree with the density on the edge of the city as it was approved by the city council, the previous city council. That being said, it is, it's weird to look at one and then look at a different one, a similar area differently, but I think the area that immediately surrounds this particular development, the annexation request here looks similar to the area that is around that, or better in terms of density. And so in that regard, I think that if we are going to consider a development of this property, it seems like it is a good step forward in terms of if we are open to the consideration of development of the property. However, that being said, I acknowledge the fact that the concerns of traffic and further development in the city are excellent concerns. So for that purpose, I am against annexation as it stands.
Okay. Commissioner Lyod?
No further comments.
Comments? And I, my comments are very, very similar, if not exact, to Commissioner Hamner and Commissioner Chris. I looked at this multiple, multiple times, going back and forth. You know, it is, it is like use. And again, this was approved. Towson was approved by council in its current set, setup. I think it's, it is difficult to go back and forth sometimes to look at one just down a little bit from it and deny that, but look at this and say, okay, well, this makes a bit more sense in how things are set up, and it does follow the original 2014 annexation plan. You know, traffic's going to be an issue no matter what goes, and if we start looking at 41 mobile homes possibly going in, going off a broken bone and, or broken bow and shilo, it's not going to be any different than, it's actually probably going to be worse than, than putting these number of homes into that location. I think it hearkens back again to, you know, looking at what really makes sense for annexation and what doesn't. And again, I think that goes back to, you know, having council take a look at, at updating the plan as we currently have it, because we will continue to see situations like this as we go forward. There's no doubt Peachtree City is, for the most part, built out. There's very little land left. So any way that we're going to see any new growth within the city other than redevelopment is going to be through annexation. And so I think it's very important to continue to push that, to have that plan updated. It's everything from my side. So I'd like to go ahead and open it up for a motion to either approve or deny the PH-23-09 annexation. Do we have a motion?
So Chairman, I propose that we approve PH-23-09 as presented.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve PH-23-09 as presented. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion to deny PH-23-09?
I make a motion that we deny PH-23-09 as presented.
We have a motion to deny PH-23-09 as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to deny as well as a second? Any discussion? With that, going to go ahead and vote. All those in favor of denying PH-23-09 signify by aye.
Aye.
All those against? The ayes have it. Motion, or the PH-23-09 is denied. Okay, so that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We're going to continue on now with 23-10-09 Building Elevations Peachtree Walk 500 Commerce Drive. Let's turn it over to staff.
All right, we're going to switch gears here and talk about some building elevations. We'll start with Commerce Drive here. So this is the portion of the West Park Shopping Center where the Kravas is located. It's called Peachtree Walk, located right here. We've looked at this, we've looked at this site recently and what they've done to their, to their renovating their elevations. But right here, we're in this little section here. And it's under a separate management group from the West Park Walk. It's zoned GC for general commercial. And they have requested to make some upgrades to their property as well, to be more consistent and in line with the newly refreshed West Park Walk on the other side. To give you a little history about this site, it was originally a movie theater, which I learned, I did not know that. And that was torn down and replaced with the current structures that are there now, which was developed in 2004, 2005. The retail tenant spaces still have a green metal roof, but the other building materials are very similar to the West Park Walk side of the shopping center prior to their painting. The main brick color is the reddish-orange with a light-colored accent brick, as you can see in the first picture in the top left there. And the signage is located on that sign band, that light-colored sign band below the roof line there. And the roof, the roof parapet matches that light color with the addition of that green band there at the top. And then the proposal is pretty much the same as the West Park Walk side with the two colors, extra white and peppercorn by Sherwin-Williams. The difference being, since they have the metal roof, it looks quite bold if the whole top parapet is all dark, and so they are requesting just the dark band with the lighter color behind it. Let's see. I think that's, oh, let's stick with that for just a second. Yeah, I think that's all I have on that one. And then Kravas is a little bit different. They, on the other hand, currently, they currently look different as well. They have the same sort of reddish brick with a light-colored multi-brick at the entrance combined with a light-colored ephes or stucco surrounding the entrance. In addition, they have a stone base and a decorative red, decorative red awnings with a green and black stripe. The roof is very different. It has a parapet wall and a flat roof instead of the metal roof. And those are all the pictures on the left of the, this is the existing building here. So their proposal, their proposal is, I assume, to be more in line with their current corporate standards. Their colors are more neutral, a little bit more neutral. The lighter color is called West Highland White, which is a creamy off-white color with some browns and some red accents and awnings. And those can be seen here on the right. And that's really about it. So with regards to colors, our land development ordinance states that facade colors should be low reflectance and subtle, neutral, or earth tones. White is considered a neutral color, but it can have high reflectance depending on the particular shade. In addition, it says colors should be complement, should complement those of neighboring buildings. It also states that natural brick should not be painted. So with all that being said, the approval is really at a discretion, is at your discretion. Staff has no recommendation.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. Do we have the applicant?
I believe the applicant is here, yes.
Good evening. My name is Daphne Bowen, and I represent the owners of the property there on our side, Peachtree Walk. As you said, we're looking to kind of refresh the center. We're going to be doing some paving repair, and we'd like for everything to look nice and new and refreshed. The building's going to be pressure washed and hopefully painted in the colors that we've chosen. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have regarding that.
Thank you. Okay. Going to go ahead and open it up for any questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Chris?
I would assume that this is being done because of the adjacent property being repainted. Is that the motivation for this request?
Somewhat, yes. They're refreshing their side, and it was actually something that we looked at doing. And the same vendor that is painting their side will be painting ours at a little bit of a cost savings to us. And the same vendor that is painting their side will be painting ours at a little bit of a cost savings to us to have it done at the same time. And just think it would make it look a little bit more uniform and all together. So, yeah.
Commissioner Hamner?
Yeah, just a quick question. The top part, where it has the darker kind of bar in between the, the two lighter ones. Just to refresh my memory, I think that the other part has all the top, that darker color as well. Is there any thoughts in term, I think, I believe this part-
Now, when you say the other part, are you referring to West Park Walk?
Yes.
Yeah, theirs is a little different. We have the metal, they have like-
They have a shingle roof.
Yeah.
It's not quite as dark.
Someone didn't have, this actually, that green isn't just painted on, it, it actually sticks out. So there's, there's a difference in elevation. And so we, we originally suggested that they paint it all black. They said that they preferred this because it highlights an architectural feature that is there.
Got it. I guess the, the reason I ask, and really you're, I would love to hear your opinion on it, is, you know, the consistency? You know, again, I can't pick, I can't picture the, the way how this would look next to the other part where it has the darker part. But like, would, do you think that this would still remain like aesthetically consistent? Or what are, what are your thoughts on that in terms of having differences between both parts?
Again, going back to West Park Walk and how they're painting theirs, or-
Yes.
It's going to pretty much look, my guess is the same, we're using the same colors, we're using the same accents. So the pillars and everything are the white and peppercorn. The only difference is we have far more of the metal awning roofing material there than they have. And so to me, it would look uniform with the rest of it. Because the, the building that's right next door to us kind of looks kind of similar to this. So I think it would be uniform.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Okay, so you just said it, it is the same base color as the others. It looks, it, I don't see a whole lot of change. Am I, maybe it's just me, I'm, I'm not seeing a whole lot of change in what it currently is. Because it looks creamy, not white.
No, what it, what it, the, the, the one that's there in the brick is how it currently looks now.
These are, this is the existing-
This is the markup of how it would look after we painted it on the opposite side.
This is the after.
Right, for them, but for the Carrabas, like what I'm looking at, it-
Oh, no, the Carrabas is totally, is different.
Right, right.
So this is the before. And they just provided renderings. They didn't, we don't have pictures of what the after would, what the after would look like.
But it's not a whole lot of color change. Is, is that what I'm seeing? I mean, it's very similar colors, right?
It is very similar colors, and I wish the gentleman was here from Carrabas, but it is very similar colors. It's just basically refreshing the colors a little bit. The awnings, that color is going to be a little bit darker than what it is right now. You can see that it's kind of like a little bit more of the reddish. And these are their corporate colors. So I think they've been here for a while, and it's probably been a while since that part has been refreshed. I know there's some, you know, rust around the top part, so it's definitely time for that. But they're not making a whole bunch of major changes. They're basically just kind of keeping it the same, going maybe just a little bit darker on the awning color.
Actually, the representative from Carrabas is here. He snuck in behind you.
So I don't really have anything else to add as far as what y'all have already covered. We just have some main talking points. The exterior model is to improve our dated look. And back to a modern Italian appearance, and we, the Carrabas fleet has not had an exterior remodel in ten-plus years. The remodel presents a fresh, appealing look and feel to our loyal customers and will attract new users for our brand. And the new design and appearance is easier to maintain, so ensures a consistently fresh appearance, so.
But like, like Daphne was saying, you know, the, the colors are similar to what they've already done to the, to the right-hand portion of the West Park Walk shopping center. So you are correct, Commissioner Johnson, it's a similar color, but it is, it is a little bit more white. So this is cream, so the peppercorn is going to be a little bit more whiter appearance.
Okay, which, which I honestly can't imagine, like that, there's so much side, like all that being white would be a lot of white. My husband and I were driving through that parking lot the other day, and I was like, I, I can't imagine all, because we had talked about it in a previous meeting, that you guys wanted to do that. And I thought it, like white and all, it just wouldn't look Italian, right? Like, so I just wanted to make sure I was seeing it correctly, because it looks so similar to what it already looks like. So that, that's all.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
No questions? I don't have any questions. Any comments? Let me start back. Commissioner Reeves?
The only comment is that it would have been nice to see the roof, the black and white of this building with the other part we've already approved. Other than that, you know, the refresh looked, I think, is great.
Commissioner Johnson?
No additional comments.
Commissioner Hamner?
No additional comments.
Commissioner Cris?
Nothing additional.
Commissioner Liotta?
I like the refresh. I like the accenting that they've done with the color scheme, particularly on the columns. I think it adds a, a little more interest to the refresh, and I think it's a good idea. I think it'll help an older center look new.
Thank you. And, and I agree. I, I think the Carrabas was so similar in many ways that they had to really pay attention to, to the colors as, as to what it currently is, at least for the main color. But it definitely brings that, you know, Italian feel back in a, a little bit better. Yeah, I think the thing that throws, of course, me off is, is exactly with the metal roof now basically black or peppercorn. When we had the shingled roof, more of a grayish. So there is a delineation between that black, dark gray band at the top, I think, of West Park, more so than what you would see with this. I think this, and I looked at it too, you know, we tried to candy stripe it a little bit too much at the top. I don't know if it would look better or worse, which is continuing that peppercorn all the way up to the top, that it just looked like a big, dark-
It's very bold looking.
Yeah, you know, with, with that together. So I, I think it looks, I think it looks good. Definitely, like you said, kind of brings out that little bit of a raised architectural from, from the top band. And it is nice to see that Carrabas wanted to go a little different. I was afraid also when this was possibly discussed as to just continuing that all the way down. So it is nice to see the delineation and the differentiation with the restaurant separate. So, thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to either approve or deny?
I make a motion that we approve item number twenty-three dash ten dash zero-three Building Elevations for Peachtree Walk 500 Commerce Drive.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
We got one more.
Turn it back over to staff.
All right. We have another location for building elevations. This one is located on Highway fifty-four across from the Juicery and the Peachtree Professional Building, where the ankle and foot center is. Here in the blue outline, actually, kind of out in front of the area we were just looking at with the Governor's Square and the LUC thirty-three we were just talking about earlier. This, this lot is Zone GC, General Commercial. This center, unfortunately, the management here was not aware of our architectural requirements, and they wanted to refresh their buildings. So they actually have already gone ahead and painted. To give you a little history on this center, it was built in nineteen eighty-three, and it really has never been updated. This facade is made up of mostly windows on the northern, the northern portion. This, although this is out fifty-four west towards Fayetteville, this portion of fifty-four runs a little more north-south. And so this building sits more north-south. So the north portion of the building, which is down at this end, is mostly windows. And then on the other end, the southern, southern piece down here, has a little jog in the building. The southern piece is, it's a mix of materials from, it's mixed up. There's some, there's some windows, there's some stone, there's some barn-style siding, a sort of jumble of materials there. Anyway, the roof is a flat roof, and it extends out over the front sidewalk, kind of wraps down over the sidewalk in this big metal canopy. As you can see, brown. So these pictures and, these four pictures here are taken from Google Street View. And so I managed to find some pictures of what it looked like before. And then these are what it looks like now. And then these are some pictures I went out to the site and took. They're slightly better than the, than the street view, but I wanted to, wanted you to see the, sort of the same angles, which I could get from the street view. So the, the colors, let's see. So the colors used for the renovation are called Cool December and Salem Black by Dunn Edwards. Again, white is considered a neutral color, but depending on the particular shade, can have a high reflectance. This building sits mostly, like as I said, in a north-south direction, sort of, sort of faces northwest. And it sits, I'm sorry, the front facade is, of the building is basically, basically in the shade for half the day, if that means anything to you. So it's not, the sun is not always shining, not always shining on it. So not terribly reflective. And the new paint scheme actually ties both ends of the shopping center together for a more unified look. You can see the way they've painted it, whereas the brown came, you know, from the roof all the way down over the side of the facade, looked a little bit daunting before. They've lightened it up a bit by keeping the dark part just on the top, and then lightening it up by making this a light color. Sort of brightens up the whole, the whole thing. And then another addition, they've added these decorative lighting features on all the columns, the fronts of all the columns. And the lights, the light fixtures use a, they use a standard sixty-watt bulb, so it's, it's a very subtle, subtle light fixture. So again, with the Land Development Ordinance tells us is that the colors should be subtle, neutral, or earth tone, and should also be low reflectance. Like I said, white can be neutral depending on the shade. Approval for this item, again, is at your discretion.
Thank you. Is the applicant?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joey Cavalier. I'm a good friend of the owner, so I'm representing him. He lives out of state, wasn't able to leave his family. He bought this property, I believe, a year ago or so. I've been, he's asked me, I live in Atlanta, so he's asked me to keep an eye on it for him. I come every couple of months to check it out. And even the before pictures, the property didn't look very nice. It is fully rented out, but, you know, being, he takes pride in his building, so he just wanted it to look, you know, just nicer, and make the community look nicer, and to fit in with the rest of the, the scheme around. So, you know, it is already fully leased, so like he was just doing it, he just want, you know, he's a really good guy. He just wanted to, to help the neighborhood look nice, and, you know, he takes pride in his, in, in what he owns. Again, we're sorry to plead ignorance of the, of the law over here in Peachtree City. He didn't know that. The color scheme had to be approved. He assumed that this would beautify the neighborhood and, and look good. And again, he, he completely apologizes and didn't realize the, again, ignorance is usually not an excuse. But again, he just really sincerely apologized and feel bad that he didn't know the law over here.
Thank you.
You have questions from here?
Okay. Any, any questions from the commissioners?
Only one question. There's, other than the change in tone between the lower canopy roof section and the upper section as being a dark and a light, there's no other definition or any accent colors on the facade or the columns. Is that something you would entertain if we thought that might sharpen it up a little bit?
Again, we're willing to, you know, compromise and do whatever the board agrees, but, you know, just the prohibitive costs of redoing the whole project and painting again is what he's really hoping to avoid. He also did repave the, the place also. He's put a lot of money to, again, he takes pride in, in wanting the place to look good. Whatever you decide he'd agree with. But again, he just, you know, asked for mercy in his wallet.
That, that's my comment. Okay. Commissioner Cris?
No questions.
Commissioner Hamner?
No questions.
Commissioner Johnson?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Any comments? Going to start back on the left. Commissioner Reeves?
I travel that area quite often, and it did concern me somewhat that I saw the activity going on. And I knew I hadn't seen it here. So I was a little concerned that if I missed it, it probably happened a year or so ago. I appreciate the apology. And I guess you're finished, is that correct?
I'm finished, yeah.
You're finished with all the painting and everything that you're-
I believe so, yes.
You believe so?
I believe he's, he's finished, yeah.
Okay.
If you approve, he's, he's good. He repaved it again. He just wants the place to look nice, he fixed it up, and those pillars really were awful, and it was a lot of-
It, it looks better. It's white, but it does look better.
I paired it up with a buddy of mine, who's a general contractor in our area, so, so the guy did a good job for him. He paid a lot of money already.
Yeah. It looks, it looks nice, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
My only comment, same, is that painting the columns would give it a little bit more dimension, I guess, or, you know, contrast. So not so much white, but other than that, I have no other comments.
Commissioner Hamner?
Some of the other comments prior to me covered my thoughts on this. I would say that it's very white. You know, it does kind of lack a little bit of that depth. I would love to have seen maybe some other options for that, but I understand it's, it's done at this point. But it's definitely an improvement from where it was.
Commissioner Cris?
Yeah, I, I also think it's an improvement, but I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners that it would have been nice to see a proposal prior to it being done. You know, this is the second painting before they come to us that we've seen recently. You know, I, I think, I think we should approve this because it does look better. However, you know, maybe we should also consider directing staff to explore a potential find for when these kinds of occurrences come, come up to us. Or also maybe a, a communication to business owners or landowners of commercial property in Peachtree City that, you know, all improvements that require approval prior to action should, should really be considered. Other than that, you know, I, I do think it looks better, so no, no further comments.
Commissioner Liotta?
I think it's a really nice refresh of what, from an older center, particularly how they treated the canopy element. You know, in, in the before pictures, you can see how it's really imposing and not really an inviting look from the street, and might not draw you in because of that. But the way they treated that canopy structure really is very well done. But I would like to know if they would consider maybe a few, similar to the prior application. We saw the columns had a little stripe at the top and the bottom, and possibly maybe some accent colors on the window or door trim that might just sharpen up that big, long, white wall in the front.
That's it. Thank you. And I, I echo my fellow commissioners. I definitely like the refresh, that to see it refreshed. But just like Commissioner Cris, one of the concerns I have is that, you know, this is the, the second major commercial building that we've had changed significantly. And I do look at painting as a significant change without prior approval. And that does concern me, as I know there will be additional ones, no doubt, that we'll see going forward. We really don't have anything, and I, I did ask that of, of staff, we really don't have anything truly in place. anything truly in place, um, to really cover things like this when this happens. Uh, but one of the things, and, and I agree with Commissioner Chris, I, I'd like to, and I don't know if this is a, a recommendation, um, to, I guess would be the city manager, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, if, if that is not correct, um, to, to, to investigate or evaluate, um, you know, a citation-
Mm-huh.
-because of the breaking of the ordinance, and this is nothing, I mean, please understand, this is, you know, not, not a punishment, punishment-
Can we understand?
-but, you know, we do have ordinances for very specific reasons, and, you know, some say ignorance is bliss, but, you know-
Yeah, we agree, we agree. Again, we, we openly apologize, we really didn't know that.
Right, but one of, one of the major things is that, you know, when I first moved into my neighborhood, it's an HOA, I was presented a copy of the covenants and, and design standards.
Yeah.
And I think that's a very good thing.
I, you know, I, I know we talked about sort of the, the fine idea-
Yeah.
-but I really latched on, and I'm not sure who said it, about proactive communication.
And I think that's the second part of that, most definitely.
I know, we did, remember when we were having the vulture issue? I'm not saying it's gone away, but it's certainly not making the news like it used to. Um, we developed a brochure and handed it out to all of the people in that commercial corridor to let them know about this issue. I believe we could do something very similar to all of the property owners along these major corridors, is create a brochure that says, "Did you know you need approval before you do these things?"
Especially with new ownership coming in, and, and we're, again, probably gonna see that more often as we go forward, um, I think it's very important to get that information out there, and as well as reinforce the current owners who may have been there for a while and have not done anything to, to truly update things. I think that's a big plus also.
I mean, it might even help, you know, when we had the Bank of America take down all those trees, "Oh, we didn't know." You know, these are kinds of proactive communications to new ownership. Yeah.
Well, again, and, and I'll, I'll leave that up to our city manager, um, but I, I'd like to at least have that evaluation of, of whether it makes sense to go ahead and do something of, of a citation, and I definitely would like to go ahead and put that on, on staff, um, to come up with something of, of a, a brochure, go out to the business owners, especially, like I said, new ownership coming in. Um, I think that's really important for them to understand, since we don't have, and we've discussed it in the past, since we don't have overlay districts in some of these areas, um, that it's not really a hard, fast, written, "Now shout, do this," um, it's more "shoulds" and things like that. I, I think it'd be important and not, definitely help new business owners or, or management companies coming into the area.
Maybe we could give something out with business licensing.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else from, from commissioners? Okay, uh, that being said, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I, I, I move to approve item number 23-10-04 with the recommendation that the current owner consider accenting the pillars and windows. I like the idea.
Me too. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay. All those in favor of approving 23-10-04 with the conditions put apart by Commissioner Chris, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Excellent.
It is approved with conditions, as, or recommendations as, as described by Commissioner Chris, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll send, that's the recommendations, or hold on, what's the next step?
Um, we, we will, do we have his contact information?
I have the, I have the owner's, yeah.
Okay, so what I think we'll do is, we'll reach out to him and make the recommendation about some of those accents, and maybe even a couple of-
Pictures or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But feel free to mention-
For sure.
That I'll be-
Accent, pillars, and the, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Staff, do you have anything else?
Well, we had the 101 workshop, I was hoping.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier, and, uh, we'll be at our next meeting, and our next meeting will be-
Okay. Well, um, okay, so I'm gonna fast up with COVID. I, I missed Friday, and I missed the deadline for a legal advertisement for, um, a re-zoning application that we received, and so, um, at this time, I don't think we have anything for the first November meeting.
Just one that I know of, and I thought there was a second thing, but I haven't figured out what it was, so right now I'm just know of one thing.
And could it wait till the second meeting in November?
Probably.
So if you don't mind, like, giving us an opportunity to kind of, um, regroup-
Okay.
-tomorrow morning and look at our agenda, but at this moi-point, I think we may reach out to you with a request to cancel the first November meeting, but keep the second one.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
So the second one would be the 20th?
27th, I believe.
Oh, oh, after Thanksgiving.
It is after, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anything else from the commissioners, staff? Nothing else?
So let's-
Motion to adjourn.